Ready to get all this in?
Yep. I call this meeting to order. It is 7:00 PM on Monday, October 15th. This is a regular meeting of the Ridgefield School Board. In attendance this evening, we have board members Tim Paulus, Crystal Brockie, John Ashmead, Peter Tensing, Paula Cole is not with us this evening. I am Chair Christine Malik, and we also have Superintendent Munowski. I would like to remind us of the Ridgefield Public Schools' mission statement. "Ridgefield Public Schools Inspires and Empowers Each Individual to Learn, Grow, and Excel." We will keep this in the forefront of our minds as we work together this evening. We will start with review and approval of the agenda.
I'll move the agenda.
Oh, second.
We have a motion by Ms. Brockie, a second by Mr. Tensing. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the agenda is approved. So we will start with information and proposals, non-action items. We have no requests this evening for public comment, so we will move on to the superintendent update.
Alright, so we are beginning with a school safety grant update. As you know, we apply for school safety grants for every single one of our sites. The state conducted a random draw. In the random draw, they were awarding $25 million in school safety grants across the state of Minnesota. And so, half of those were reported to go into the metro area, half of those were reported to go outstate. The central building across the parking lot was assigned random number 70, which means that we received $180,000 in regard to improving school safety at Central Building. This goes as an additional upgrade to what we were doing with our capital facility referendum. And just as a reminder, as we renovate and update all of our buildings, we are increasing and improving safety and security and traffic flow at all of our sites. But this allows for some additional work in regard to door hardware upgrades, door alarm systems, and also external communication systems that will be installed above and beyond what had initially been planned, which is an expansion based on receiving that school safety grant. So we're excited and pleased to share that information with the board today. And it's $180,000 in addition to the work we'll be doing over at Central. Any questions about that?
I was just trying to Google as fast as I can, because I am really stunned if it was actually just a random draw and not rooted in the application.
So it was not rooted in the anything. It was a random draw. So each of our applications received a specific number. So middle school, I believe, received maybe 107 or 109, and it was close. And each of our schools got different numbers based on a random number generator from what it has been reporting to us. And I believe it was split into outstates and metro. And a set of random numbers were given to all the applications outstate, and random numbers to all the metro until all the dollars were spent.
I think if I recall the article, they had roughly $25 million to give out and had over 50 million in requests.
I think it was well over 50 million.
Well over.
Yeah, I think it was more than 250.
That was in my mind as well.
Yeah, I thought it was, they were going to do 1 out of 3, $10 worth of requests. Yeah, looks happy and pleased by that. Of course, we would have preferred all of them, but random numbers will only generate the random numbers.
That might have looked suspicious if all of them were.
That would have been quite lucky, and it's the kind of thing you would want to play in the mega millions of a problem. Alright, so, item two in the superintendent reports is in regard to vision cards and reporting our progress. And just as a reminder, over the work last year, we worked on vision cards, which is an analysis of our strategic plan and looking at ways to report across all of the things that our district is trying to accomplish, across each of our four strategic plan strategies. And each of those strategic plan strategies has been given a specific vision card, and those will be coming out over the course of this year. And we will then also provide revised ones prior to the end of the year. And so just as a reminder, vision cards are a way of reporting. They're also reported to the public, so it's an accountability system, and it also helps us remain focused on our top priorities. Because as you look at our strategic plan 2015 to 2020, there are about 145 specific strategic plan activities. And so we really want to remain focused on measuring and reporting on a yearly basis some of those top and most important items. Just as a reminder, there are four vision cards. Back in July, we promoted on we will positively promote Ridgefield Public Schools. Tonight, we'll be presenting on we will acquire and align human, financial, operational, and technology resources to maximize operational goals. And then we will be reporting on strategies one and three in the coming months, over the course of this year. When will they be presented? So as a reminder, we did that strategy two in summer 2018, and then those other cards will follow late winter and early spring. And then, just as a reminder, are they final? Because that was a question from our last meeting. The answer is no. Part of this process is the board to review, take a look, see if we are looking at the main focus points we've been over the course of this year. And we can certainly revise those and re-present them prior to the end of the school year. And so as a reminder, there are specific strategic plan strategies at the core of our vision cards. This particular vision card being focused on financial and operational-based resources has specific measurements related to teacher evaluations. So we're looking at the percentage of new teachers scoring at or above proficient level on each of the domains observed. And domains have to do with planning, instruction, relationships with students, and effective overall professionalism. Looking at on-time completion of our teacher evaluations, looking at on-time completion of classified evaluations. Then we're also looking at something that we have yet to do, but something that is within our strategic plan and we want to continue that work. Measuring the amount of waste generated versus recycling as we continue to try to improve our green footprint as a school district. Looking at our unassigned fund balance as a percent of district expenditures, making sure that our budget accurately represents both revenues and expenditures. And then also looking at the ratio of mobile devices as we rolled out and launched 2 to 1 and also 1 to 1 over the course of this year. And so what you see in the board packet in the spreadsheet is the data at the back that makes up the basis for our vision card, which I will put on to the screen at the moment. And so as we look at our vision card as a reminder, 5, or the dark green, is our vision level. We are moving forward in the lighter green. Baseline is in the yellow area. An area of focus is in red, and the area of significant focus is in pink. And so as we look at our new teachers scoring at or above, we are right in the center of that proficient area. As we looked at 80% of our brand-new teachers scored in that particular range. On-time teacher completion, or completion evaluation, I believe we had about 97%. Then looking at the classified evaluations, and just as a reminder, this is the first year going through a full paraprofessional evaluation cycle, as those were completed last year. And so we had 92% of those completed on time. We have yet to fully measure our waste, and as we are looking at measuring that waste versus recycling, that's something that the operations team is developing over the course of this year, and will look to be able to report on that as we move towards the future. General fund balance, and this isn't quite and fully official, we're marking that as 4.5, or right close to where our vision level is, as we've gotten to a 5.49% as a result of our most recent audit. Budget, accurately represents revenues and expenditures. And just as a reminder, this involves all the process of revising our budget, consistently revising our expenditures. We are at a .2% variance on our revenue and a .7% variance on expenses, which is at or above our vision level. It was one of the questions I asked our finance team, is this somewhere where we should then look at reevaluating and revising what our vision is? They suggested that 2, 3, 4% are more common in terms of that variance, but Craig is also able to answer some questions in that particular area as I start to learn more about the revenue expenditure proportions. Then, as we rolled out 2 to 1, we found that we're actually above, right now, 2 device, or 1 device for every 2 students in pre-K 5, and we're actually above 1 device for every student in 612. And so we are at or above vision levels there. And so as we look to what we would do in the future, and you can see just at the bottom where it said increased vision for the future. Within technology, what we'll be doing is looking at now not just that rollout and completing the rollout effectively, which is a specific strategic plan strategy, but then also continuing to look and try to measure and report on how are we doing with the devices that we have and that we have rolled out. As you remember, we've been very deliberate and slow evaluating our process to make sure that we are going to be successful, and so that led to this year's rollout. And so next year, within our strategic plan, we'll be taking those large steps forward to make sure we're being successful with each of those devices. Questions? Could you take a moment? There was a lot of questions.
I have a lot of questions. I don't know.
Me too. You guys, okay.
I only have a few.
So should we just go through them one by one so that everyone can get there?
Sure.
It's in there. So I already talked to you about the first one in 4A, so percentage of new teachers scoring above 50% proficient on domains observed. I think it might be helpful to have some explanation of what that means, because when I looked at it, I thought it meant our teachers were 50% proficient in the subject area that they taught, which is not what it means.
Right, so domains are a terminology from the Charlotte Danielson evaluation that we use. There are four areas that teachers can be scored, unsatisfactory, and then everything else is considered satisfactory or better. The first level of satisfactory is basic. The second level is considered proficient, which is considered the high-level performance that would be your typical strong experienced teacher. And then there is distinguished, which is generally around the top 5% of all teachers you would find anywhere. And so what we're looking at when we hire brand-new teachers is we are wanting them at or above 50% proficient, and obviously, basic to proficient, ideally with no unsatisfactory areas, and then continuing to grow to being 90-plus proficient in each of the domains, and there are multiple domains in terms of the evaluation.
When is the measurement taken? Or is that observed?
The measurement is taken three times throughout the course of the year. It's taken in the fall, it's taken in the winter, and then a final culminating evaluation is done in the spring, which actually leads to that on-time implementation of the full cycle.
And is it the final that is reflected in this, or is it the best of the three that is reflected in this?
That one is the final.
Okay.
Yes.
No, go ahead.
My question about 4A in particular is just how this was determined as the appropriate benchmark?
So we...
Like, do we have data from the Charlotte Danielson? I can't remember the name of the organization, but they know they study this a lot.
So yeah, the Danielson framework suggests that initial teachers should ideally be, if you hired well, for lack of a better term of saying it, at or above the 50% proficient in those domains.
So this is rooted in external judgment about where new teachers should be, ideally?
Correct. But I also want to acknowledge that the typical teacher evaluation, and Danielson doesn't abide by this, has fewer people that would be marked basic. Basic is not considered a bad score according to Charlotte Danielson. However, culture and dynamic isn't that that's how evaluations have gone. And so a lot of our work in collaboration with our teacher team has been talking through that a basic isn't necessarily something bad, it's an area for focus and an area for growth, and it is not below, it is not below expectations. That would be called unsatisfactory.
And then, kind of what we're working to measure here is to look at our hiring practices and how well we're doing in hiring strong teachers.
Correct. This is a specific measure of hiring practices, because these are people coming in within their first year or initially within our organization. And so what that measures is, is as people are entering our classrooms as brand-new staff, and a lot of them are, some are brand-new teachers, some are experienced teachers, are we hiring well, and are those staff coming in at or above sort of that expectation line?
So in some ways, then, that it should shape our interview process and the process by which we select people? Should it not?
Yes. During the interview, there are specific questions that come out of the Danielson rubric. And so there are things that we ask our teachers that would be expected to be implemented in our classrooms, and they use as some of our screening tools. Any other questions about new teachers? Got it. On-time completion of evaluation.
So my thought was, why wouldn't we always complete the evaluations on time? So maybe you want to share some of the things that cause us to not be able to?
So first, let me just remind, so 98% or better would be at our vision level. We ended up at 97%. And so teachers sometimes go on leave, sometimes leave our organization, sometimes there are things that get in the way of evaluations happening exactly on the cycle that we would want. What we are shooting, obviously, for above 98%, we are also not giving ourselves a pass for those things happening. We're actually measuring that because we do want to implement a full evaluation cycle for all of our teachers.
And I didn't have anything additional for 4C for the...
Got it. The one piece, just to keep in mind, so that was at 92% versus the 97%. And the reason that that's lower is that paraprofessional evaluation was, across our district, fully systemically new. We did have paraprofessional evaluation, but the full implementation was new last year, and so some of our evaluators were newer to the process, rather than our QCOM and our administrators who were working with the new teachers for the on-time cycle completion.
But that's really great to be getting that kind of feedback to all of our employees.
Yes, and that has been a goal of our HR team. The goal set up by the board is to have full evaluations in front of every single one of our employees.
That is my question. Are there staff members that do not fit within 4B or 4C? Because I think that there are.
Mr. Holdy, I'm going to have to check to see where we are in that process.
So this is something that we've gradually been building out and expanding that evaluation process to more of a loop-de-loop-based approach. The one group that is missing here still is the facilities and transportation group. So that's the last tier of implementation. So the teachers had the revision, the Charlotte Danielson model, moving it to frontline was the first tier. Over the last two years, they've been building out the classified groups for paraprofessionals, clerical, food service, and then the facilities and transportation is the last group. One of the challenges there is we have one supervisor for every driver, custodian, cleaner of the district, and so trying to figure out how to do that work efficiently, yet provide the complex information. So that's in development for this year specifically. And then, we do have one other small tier of employees, our outreach workers and other misslaners paid, that's typically through by the board, that hasn't been developed yet, and is usually one-person, two-person positions, like our registry nurse and things like that.
Well, and also, district staff members are now reflected in this, are they? Unless they're part of these groups specifically.
Oh, so management team and classified management is not built into these two rubrics?
Okay.
But they do have evaluation, they are evaluated 100% on time.
Right. So that is more my point, that it feels a little bit weird that we're isolating some staff members and putting in here, when I feel like we've actually been really consistent that we think this is important for us as a district.
And that's good. I think the reason we built these two categories in is because they're the ones that are in the newest development and aligned with the system, and so we certainly can add that in for the next year.
One of the conversations I had with Chair Malik was, we continue to build as we move forward in our strategic plan, and therefore, there are things that we have passed that were not selected as strategies to review, and things we will continue to work on that we will look at for next year. Waste generated versus recycling.
I look forward to hearing about the measurements.
Yes. Sounds good.
I guess that's all you've got.
I just didn't understand, in the spreadsheet...
Yes.
I did not understand what those percentages even represented.
So that would be the amount recycled compared to the amount generated, I believe, for 7.
So if we have a baseline of, say, 100 tons, and we only divert 10% of that, that would be a 1.
Okay.
10 to 14% of that.
Okay.
So we have to get a baseline, I imagine?
Yeah, so we have to get a baseline. The baseline here of 24 to 30% is kind of one of the things that when we were working on, I had a Penn County grant for recycling. They built in this kind of a standard of, here's the baseline, with the goal of being 40%. Right now, we only have recycling and trash. We haven't moved fully into composting across the district. Those are things as we build out our construction project, we'll have some opportunities to build in actually composting receptacles in addition to the recycling and the regular trash components of it. And nutrition services tends to be one of the higher utilizers of that material and the waste associated with that.
That was my next question.
Yeah, and I think based on your answer, one of the things that's throwing me off is the wording. If the percentage represents the percent that we recycle, then I think the language in the measure...
So we can certainly change the wording to reflect the percentage of, the percentage of waste you recycle as a proportion of the...
Perfect. I think that's why I just couldn't follow.
I think the parenthetical as well was intended school waste, percentage of school waste diverted to other streams.
Okay. That's helpful.
So composting, recycling was what that percentage was intended to be.
Unassigned general fund balance as a percentage of district expenditures. And so the targets represent the board's set goal of 4 to 8. Below 3 would be intervention level. The unofficial audited number comes in at 5.49%, and we're waiting for the audit to come back. We believe that's where it will land at the end of last year.
So I know board policy is 4 to 8%, but our vision, the vision of this board, might be more along the lines, I think, of having a fund balance that is able to, that we are able to utilize during times, like, as a backup plan if things go wrong, if everyone always says the boiler goes out.
Right.
It's never happened to us, but...
So, well, that actually has happened. We do have insurance for boilers, and we do have money actually set aside for boilers. That's one of the funny things that gets said. So in grand, we have 6 to 8% as our vision level. If we got into that range and the board wanted us to reevaluate 8% at the ceiling of that level, then, from my perspective, we would want to review that policy to determine, is the 4 to 8 windows still acceptable, or do we want to move that up to 6 to 10? Or have that as a conversation for the board. But again, that would be a board conversation for guidance, but we put the current, my perspective, board ceiling at the top of that vision. Anything else?
People are looking at me, do I? Am I supposed to have a comment here?
Looking at the treasurer.
No, yeah, no, I appreciate that. No. You know, it's interesting, we've talked about fund balance a number of times, and the range is stated in policy is 4 to 8. This, you know, but it's not required that we stay within that range. You know, prior to, I don't know, eight years ago or so, we were down at around 2.5. And I think our board has stated our goal is to get well into the upper range of our stated, of our existing framework, if not past it. But I don't know if we've gone so far as to say that we believe that should be a long-term policy change to get higher than 8. In all of that said, you can only get there by going exceedingly slowly, because, you know, you could get there in one year, but it would hurt like heck. So we have to do it in a very measured, over the long place, so.
Can I catch that on tape for you, next time we have this conversation?
It's on tape right now.
Yes. That's good.
So it'll take us a little while to get to 8% from where we are now.
Alright. Budget accurately represents revenues and expenditures. This is one that I needed my own clarification from our finance team. We had put less than 1.99% variance at the 5% vision level. We actually had a 2.2% variance in revenues from our budget and a .7% variance in expenses. That would actually be at the upper range of our visionary level. And so that was, what I had been reassured by our finance team was an exceedingly accurate year, having to do with multiple reviews and multiple budget revisions.
So is this, so does it change on the fly as we make revisions to the budget?
So this, in 1718, we made significant changes to our budget between the adopted budget and the revised budget. There were things that previously were, the revenues and expenditures were both not included, associated with special education, transportation, and things like that. So this is connected within the one board-approved revised budget, the variance between that and now what the board is, will be reviewing as part of the audit process. That variance is what the board looks at every time as part of the audit process, is the most recent formally approved board budget compared to what the audit shows.
So, but if we're allowed to make revisions, how could we ever be really far away?
So we make one revision mid-year, and that's typically the process. When we look historically, there were a number of things that were variances from the adopted budget, or even between the revised budget and what we got to when we got to the audit. So even with that one revised budget, what we tried to do this past year is get a lot more specific and make sure that we have a clean review of what that revenue projection was and what the expenditure projection was going to be in April, is when we're making those final modifications to the budget.
So is this, you've mentioned in years past, like, is this, we have improved coding? Or...
Yeah, so we've been changing coding, we've been changing, kind of drilling down to specific changes around utilities, around transportation, around making sure that we're doing a complete review of our salaries and benefits mid-year and not just kind of running those numbers from where they were the previous spring, and making some of those assumptions so that we have a good estimate of where we're at at the end of the fiscal year next spring, moving into the next budget cycle. And that's kind of that key piece, is do we have good, accurate information at our revised budget for the previous year when we move in and start creating budget for the following year?
Internally, do we, maybe not, maybe for vision card, maybe for just internal, do we track our accuracy from the initial to the revised?
We have not been tracking that recently. We did take a look at that as part of the vision card this time. Obviously, there was a lot greater variance on that because we did a deeper dive into cleaning up into that revised budget this year than what we had done previous years.
Because I mean, you'd think that would be something that would be great, right? If we could nail it right out of the gate, that would be fun.
Yeah, and obviously, there's, you know, the biggest changes, you know, if we look at it from the expenditures, that's one piece. When we look at it from the revenue standpoint, because that is so much heavily focused on enrollment, that that one student, two students can make even big swims on what that projected revenue would be. So we can kind of start to track that a little bit more, and that's one of the things moving forward. But this, we're looking at specifically where, what the audit was likely going to be comparing, and that gives us second track record of information. Obviously, expenditure projections are one of the things that we'll be maintaining and observing moving forward as well.
And these ranges for the scores, is that in absolute value? Right, it's just, you know, 2% under is the same as 2% over?
Correct. So in this case, we were 2% under in revenue.
.2%.
.2% under in revenue, which is about $100,000 in general fund. We were 7, .7% under in expenditures. So when we're both under in revenue and under expenditures, we're closer to what that fine dollar amount is. So it is either positive or negative in what the variances are we're looking at. And that is kind of the standard when we talk to some other school districts. They use kind of a 2% standard is what they hope to fall within in their budget. Thank you.
Alright, and so then I will pop the next two together. And that's the average ratios of 2 to 1 pre-K through 5, and 1 to 1 612, and we obviously had some very significant rollouts. We actually, in pre-K 5, we have 1,185 devices for 2,215 students. And so that's just over 2 students for every device. And then we have at the 612 level, we have 2,370 devices for 2,115 students. And so we're actually also above the 1 device for every student. So that includes Chromebooks in students' hands, Chromebooks in carts, Chromebooks in classrooms, and devices in the hands of our students to really try to accelerate learning through what is now, I believe, a five-year-old technology levy as we get to continuing on to accelerating technology in the hands of our students.
So I asked questions about this one, but like, what I learned to really think about it and point out is that when we set the strategic plan, we had just passed the technology levy, and that's when we started with infrastructure. So it seems like, oh, we just bought all these, but it's been a long process of careful planning to get to this, and now, like, my thought is it gets kind of to the fun part about how we're going to utilize these devices.
Right, there are two pieces. Obviously, as we, as I began as superintendent, we began with the network restructure and then moved on to evaluating where we could be successful with technology, so we weren't just rolling it out. And then we did ultimately, just this year, roll out technology to this level. The other thing to keep in mind is that this is the vision card about acquiring and aligning financial, operational, technology resources to maximize organizational goals. So this is about the devices itself, this is about the finances themselves. Vision cards A, which is around student learning and curriculum, and C, which is about our environment, are about those other things or the impact of these pieces. And so we're really looking at, this is about the resources and the other areas in terms of vision card are about what is happening with those resources.
I think, oh, go ahead.
Well, I guess that, from our perspective, I mean, as we, because you did comment here that we need, now that we've achieved this, we need to determine where we have next. And so I guess two questions. Number one is, and it may not be as pertinent here, but sometimes when you've achieved the goal, if you shift focus, that you may step backward. And so I guess I wonder about that, about that phenomenon in general. That may not be as pertinent here, but just sort of a general phenomenon, and as we... And as we do achieve goals, how do we make sure that we don't then slide? And then, second question, I guess, was just basically, what will we aim for next?
So, I think what you're pointing out is what we've talked about in my goals of process goals versus achievement goals, which is, you know, a process goal is getting technology in the hands of our students. Achievement is when those technology resources help them learn more effectively, engage in their learning more effectively. Vision card C and learn more effectively, vision card A. And so, I think that we have, I think there's approximately 145 specific measures we look at within our five-year strategic plan. And each of, and many of those build upon each other and so, all of those aren't in the vision card. But I think that, you know, if we're specifically looking at areas where we have achieved a goal specifically, the, the focus that is not on getting the technology any longer into the hands of the students, it's making sure that it's getting the outcomes that we're looking for and that kids are successfully engaging with them. And then, I think there's always a risk of losing focus. I think that the whole point of why we're here is to continue that focus on our students, continue to focus on having the strong engagement within our schools and the strong accelerated learning within our schools. And so, as long as we don't lose focus on that piece, I think that each of these specific strategies in the other areas or specific activities and actions in the other areas will help us build towards those ultimate goals that we're trying to achieve. And I think that's where our eyes are, is that, that's the ultimate prize in the end.
I think you kind of indirectly answered my question, but I'm going to make sure that I have it accurate. These ratios in terms of the number of devices really just measure our inventory at any given moment in time. It does, it's not actually a measure of sort of usage and what students are actually using on a day-to-day basis, correct? Because I imagine that would be very difficult to do.
Correct. No, this measures that we have a Chromebook in the hands of every six, 12 child and we have some additional, additional technology there also. Doesn't mean they're using them every day.
Could be that they're on the shelf.
Well, that's why, I think that's why the in the hand language is actually what's throwing me off.
Well, we did actually roll them out in our middle school and our high school in this way, so they actually do have them in their hands. There was a very busy fall in our secondary schools and kids actually got the technology in their hands. In pre-K to five, yes, inventory would be more accurate because when you're going two to one. But no, I am, I am pretty confident that there is a piece of technology in the hands, not necessarily every class, every moment, certainly not used in every lesson, but in the hands of every secondary student in our district, that would be accurate.
Okay, thanks.
If they're not left on the bus.
Yes, yes. If Mr. Ashmead hasn't collected them or they're not staying at home, over those types of things, exactly. Anything else on vision?
Just, just for clarity, just to remind me, the, the maximum score here is six?
Uh, yes. Five to five point nine is the maximum piece.
And the lowest score is one?
Yes.
And?
Sort of that three to three point five, three nine is the baseline area, sort of in that mid-range.
I, I do have a couple of just overarching comments. The question is about the weighted performance score. Does that imply that these four A through four H are not weighted equally?
So, in the end, and a couple of things that we've talked about adding, and these will be long-term usage of our, of our vision cards. One, there is a trend line and then there's also a weighted performance score. And so, as we are looking at these and we're looking at our measurements, we're going to start to measure also what is more important as we continue to move forward and we would give more weight to certain areas versus other areas. Or that is one of the functions that often happens where we can do with the vision cards. And then trend line is how are we going over time? Are the scores increasing or are our scores decreasing? And allows us to sort of measure progress as we move forward.
And so, will we be having the conversation about what feels like appropriate weighting or will you be coming back to us with you and your team's view on what that weighting should be?
That is a good question. We'll have to analyze what are those most important pieces in terms of a strategic plan. It sounds like something likely to hit, probably not this next meeting, but in a couple of meetings with our superintendent, superintendent strategic advisory group, talking about what are those pieces that are most important to start gathering and putting out just of ourselves and our community.
Okay, then I promise these are two nitpicky observations, so I will
Excellent.
Preface that. Number one, I do not understand why pink is on the far right and red is second in because it sort of goes against every dashboard I feel like I have ever seen. The second thing is, vision card D does not really describe in any intuitive way what this is, but it is strategy four in the strategic plan. So, I guess I'm wondering why it's called vision card D?
We certainly could change that.
Great.
I think we just identified it as strategy D, or that's why it came out. But yes, so that is our strategy.
I think it's just inconsistent then if we're using four or D and I think it would be nice to be consistent about what one we use.
We will do that.
Great.
Just for clarity, acquiring the line that is the exact language of our strategy. Thank you. Anything else? Because these will then be revised and cleaned up for our presentation at the end, which will be revisions from vision card two or B, we will clean up language, and then D or four, and then we'll have one and three AC coming up in the coming months and then a final revision for the end of the school year.
Have we, have we got these? I mean, I'm trying to surf right now to the homepage. I was wondering if we have these, because you would think that this would be, the vision card would be the sort of thing that would be easy and upfront as far as display on a certain section of what they, yeah.
And I thought we had put up the first card, but I cannot guarantee that at the moment.
I know, we talked about it.
I know we did. And so, I do believe it's up, but I am not 100% sure and I will, if not up now, it will be up before the end of the week. Both of them will. The vision card tab on our website. All right. Third piece, October one, enrollment report. And so, as we look at where we are, this is sort of the first enrollment count and we'll say this is the unaudited numbers and the official report that includes open enrollment and all of those pieces and gives us a lot of the deeper answers comes in about a couple of months from now. Mr. Holgy, is it November or is that the January?
December, January is when that.
December, January is when that report comes. And so, looking across the district, as we recall, there were data suggesting that we would be declining enrollment for several years as the birth rate continues to decline across our zip code. We actually had projected that over the last two years and come in significantly above projection. And so, we worked to actually change some of those projections and then it kind of bounced the other direction. And so, we actually projected, projected ourselves to be up, I believe, about 18 students. So, we are 89 students currently below projection, that's right across all of our buildings. And then, changed endowed in enrollment from about 71 students from last year. That is a pretty equal spread across most of our buildings and something that we are beginning and working on analyzing as we really continue to take a look at how will we capture and maintain students and continue to hold on to and order our market share.
So, what, what should we be expecting moving forward from a analysis and reporting standpoint? What's your plan there?
So, we began to look at the data. So, we're going to look at open enrollment. We're going to look at charter school enrollment. We're going to look at resident enrollment at Richfield to determine, are we capturing more or less of our market share or what does that look like in terms of that open enrollment piece, sort of that open enrollment in versus the open enrollment out? We're going to also use then this to realign our data as we examine sort of those projections for next year to continue to plan that budget for the future. So, we'll also look at if there are any specific patterns. Obviously, if you see, for example, we were down significantly in STEM kindergarten, so we're doing a specific deeper dive in regard to that piece. We know, for example, that there was a change in the order of open houses this past year and STEM had traditionally been at one end of that and now is on the other end in terms of first versus last. And so, STEM had given, we did the last open house, I believe, and there now the, was the first open house this particular year. And so, there's some theories around when people turn in paperwork, when they apply to certain schools and how that might impact in terms of kindergarten. And so, as we look at pieces, we also know, for example, sixth grade at, we've taken a look at why one of our areas at middle school and our only, one of our only areas in secondary were significantly, or were up. Middle school has actually become a growth attractor in terms of open enrollment for our dual-language program as we saw a significant influx of students coming from Minneapolis, coming into our dual-enrollment program specifically at middle school as their elementary ends at fifth grade. We also saw the opening of a charter school in the hub as SciTech came in, our first elementary charter school to reopen. Say, we saw at least 22 to 25 students enrolled at SciTech, were resident students in Richfield. And so, that's, as we take a look across areas, we're, we're trying to figure out each of those pieces to sort of put the full puzzle together. So, that's an example of some of the data and we'll definitely do a deeper dive as we get the full official reports from the state, enrollment from schools around our area, and then also a deeper analysis of the students that we have.
I'm not sure how feasible it is because I'm not sure what data you could actually draw upon. Maybe it's conversations with the city, but I would be interested as part of that analysis to know whether the changes related to real estate and the market related to real estate in Richfield is potentially contributing to some of these shifts that we're seeing as well.
So, we certainly have theories about that. One, the, the best data point we have is in terms of resident students and resident students who live in Richfield, going here or going elsewhere. Certainly, as the economy grows and as perhaps people have more dollars or their house is worth more, they may make different choices or have more funds to put towards different pieces. There's also, we've had a conversation about as house prices rise in Richfield, there is the possibility that as Richfield homes are now of roughly the same value as farther-away suburbs homes that may be of larger size, there are people with more children who may be moving to those homes. But those are things that we will try to figure out again as, as we do that deeper analysis of the data. Most of it at this point is anecdotal.
Yes, it's just one curious thing. I'm looking at the far right in the yellow and the blue, so we have last year, October, and this year, October. So, last year, October, we had 289 11th graders and, and those 289 11th graders became 309 12th graders. Do we, do we typically pick up 20 new enrollees?
Yeah, it's unusual. No, because if you look at the variance of projection, we would have assumed it would have been, oh, no, that's not the projection variance. Our projection was 285, so we projected down four. So, that would be more like the typical pattern and so, not necessarily.
Is there any, I mean?
We haven't examined that one yet, but yes, that is, that is one of the anomalies.
So, so we have had some fluctuations by grade levels at the building where we will see an increase. One of the things just to keep in mind is that those high school numbers also include Richfield Career Education, Career College Experience program. And so, that's one where we see students enrolling who maybe previously weren't enrolled in Richfield per se, but are enrolling into that RSEP program at Normandale.
And there have been increases there.
And there have been increases. And so, we see that there's 58 students there this year as seniors.
68. Oh, no, 58.
You know, as seniors this year. And so, that's one where we've seen some significant variances. And even within the high school, we see a lot of students changing from one building to another, one district to another. So, we've seen fluctuations in grade levels at the high school in the past. I don't know if it's been that prominent, but I think the RSEP program is the biggest kind of outlier where that's up significantly from what it's been in the years at the beginning of the year.
That makes sense to me that that would disproportionately attract kids at the oldest grade level. Okay. If you could, yeah, if you could give us some numbers on that, that would be great.
We'll take a look and see if we can see variances and try to report back to that.
Thank you.
The other thing just to note, and it kind of is offset in a couple of different places, we did receive approval for a new voluntary pre-kindergarten program this year at Central. We did build that into the projection just for comparison, but that was something that we weren't anticipating when we were projecting for next year. So, that projection variance is slightly smaller because we built that into the projection of 20, even though we had nobody enrolled in that program last year and weren't fully anticipating that until we received that late spring or early summer. So, that's one other just kind of variance from where we're typically seeing this report.
To go back to what we were just talking about, is it possible to have RSEP have a distinct line, column, something so that we can actually see what the numbers are?
So, where is on the far right column, just to the left of the 2018 actual?
Oh, thank you. I totally glossed over that. Thank you.
That's why I was magically pulling those numbers out of my head.
RSEP has seen slow growth each of the last several years and then a larger jump. I believe it was 44 students last year and 68 this year. And so, we've seen a larger jump this year than we had in the past. And so, it feels as though it is beginning to really take root and grow.
So, yes, we can do that right away.
Yeah, well done.
In real time, very impressive.
Look again. So, and then as Steve indicated, when we come to the open, or where we are in enrollment report, then we'll get the details of demographics, we'll get the details of changes of where students are going, where students are coming from, and that will give us more information about if there's community variances or things like that that we need to be aware of.
So, so tying this back to the prior, the dashboard on the budgeting and the variances, right? So, being down 89 students from projection has an impact on, on our, yeah, so we'll have some, we'll have an updated, a revised budget
Yep.
At some point? Or does that phase in next year?
There are two different components. So, we've already levied for students that we were projecting to be coming this year and so, that will be one to two years of variances. We, the state aid will get built in this year.
Okay.
So, we'll still be receiving the levy dollars associated with what we had anticipated in that area. The state is what gets adjusted during the course of the year specifically.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay. We have commendations listed on our agenda, but I see none in the packet.
I do not believe we had any this morning.
Okay. So, that means we will move on to the consent agenda.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Polis, a second by Mr. Ashmead. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair puts aye and the consent agenda passes. We have no old business today, so we will move on to new business and a new board policy, parent guardian engagement.
All right. And so, as every student succeeds X has continued, districts are creating and adopting family engagement policies. And so, we have been working to develop both a policy and a guideline. We also have, and we just have not put it into the packet, the MSBA model policy, which will actually be in our next packet. And so, this was used in the development of this particular policy. And so, we have been working on creating both in collaboration with Dr. Clarkson and her team members and then also a group of parents and community members and then also our attorney, a family engagement policy that meets the rigorous expectations of ESSA. And so, I'm just going to do a quick, quick overview. As we take a few looks, you'll notice that obviously it follows our typical, talking about the policy, that family engagement is important for student achievement, that we as a board and as a district support family engagement and we want to support that through this policy. And so, the general statement of policy is similar to our others, that this is our role is to have this policy. We will also create it, publish it, and then also distribute it to each Title I family, which is families across our district because we are Title I schools. Each school will have a school Title I plan and that is part of the expectations of both Title I and ESSA, which talks about how each school will create a compact with families to then have that family engagement, which we value and which we try to encourage in each of our centers. Then along those same regards, you, oh, and actually, that's it for family engagement policies. So, each site then has a compact that they would then work on and share and distribute to parents.
What I can say about this is we have, the family engagement plans have always been in place. When we read, we did not have a family engagement per se policy and that's required. You will notice a significant difference between the MSBA policy and the proposed policy. Part of that was on the recommendation of our, of our attorney because the language in the legislation kind of mixed up, planned, misuses policy. And so, we have to have a district policy in every building that receives Title I has a student or a family engagement plan. So, this is meeting as the regulations. So this is meeting as the regulations.
I think my only comment is that this feels like it's a really generic policy in that there isn't anything specific to Richfield in it. So for example, you know, where somebody could find the family engagement plan or plans that currently exist. So I think being able to integrate some of those specifics for us into the next version would be helpful to see.
What we can do is put up guidelines, create guidelines for this, and there is a format for, that outlines everything that has to be in all of the family engagement plans.
Got it. And so the family engagement plan is, at first I was reading this as the family engagement plan is customized per Title I family. But now I'm reading it as the family engagement plan is a school-wide plan that is implemented, and the Title I families are specifically called out for distribution of the plan, but that the family engagement plan is not necessarily specific to those families.
No, so each Title I school is expected to develop a plan? So there are two ways that Title I is actually implemented. There are site-wide Title I schools, and then there are individual Title I schools where certain students are identified for Title I or Title I services. We go school-wide. We don't do that targeted individual component. And so what would be appropriate for the language that connects to our district as we continue with the next step to the policy is distributed to all members of our Title I schools. So that's it. That would be a clear way of playing out the language.
Which, that was one of the other things that I was saying I would just wait and ask when we see the next version, but I might as well ask it now, is do we truly just distribute this to each Title I family? Or do we actually distribute it to all families, knowing that then we capture all Title I families?
So since we're, since we're school-wide title buildings, every family would be eligible for title services. So it is, when we say distributed, it can be sent out in a newsletter with the link or it's placed on the website, but it has to be in a whole tall family.
So there are, I'll try to say it differently. So there are school-wide, where for example, everyone at this table would be in a Title I school. Or there are what's called targeted Title I schools, where let's say you and Tim are targeted for Title I, but this group is not.
Even though we're in the same school.
Even though you're in the same school. So that's a targeted Title I school versus a school-wide school. All of our schools are school-wide schools, and so we should just change the language to go along with that? This is appropriate targeted school Title I language, but it would go to everyone within the school.
Yep, I think the wording of 2D is what it's going to be.
Any other worded or other questions for revision? Perfect, all right, so that is the first read. We will then come back with the model policy in the package. We'll come back with some revisions, some additions to Richfieldize the language, and we'll take it from there. The next component, so our Safe and Supportive Schools group. We have had the attendance policy and guidelines, which are definitely in need of revision. And so what we did is, according to the cycle, we're reviewing that attendance policy. Safe and Supportive Schools team has reviewed, also worked with our attorney in addition to that. You'll see some pretty significant changes in regard to the proposal in this particular policy. Similar purpose, the goal obviously is to add to kids in school, and we acknowledge that regular attendance is important. General statement of policy talks about the compulsory attendance law, that we all sort of share responsibility for student attendance, that we should also have equitable opportunity and treatment, that student individual needs must be considered. Then it talks about withdrawal, which is both the expectation of a district, but expectations clarified by the state in terms of how a student remains within our district, or after 15 days, for example, is drawn or withdrawn from our district. And then also that shared responsibility, and how we separate out the shared responsibility for students, for staff, for parents and families in regard to students' attendance. And then we also have in terms of guidelines, guidelines how this will be implemented, and so that follows. Give you a couple, yes?
You'd mentioned, this has been updated following, following some meeting collaboration. So we have an existing, this policy exists already. The red line would be helpful if there is one.
Got it, okay.
So I don't know what the actual changes were, so if we get changes like that, that would be helpful.
Or if that's too difficult, looking at the old one, and then we can see this one.
This one is a complete overhaul.
Okay, complete overhaul, okay, which is fine, so that...
Yes.
In Section 3C, students under withdrawal, withdrawal, students between 16 and 18, seek to withdraw from school. They must, along with a parent or guardian, attend a meeting with school personnel to discuss their opportunities. I would expect that, and we can impose that on staff. Can we really expect someone who's leaving to require them to meet with us? I mean, they're withdrawing. They walk in, they hand in the paper. Are they not out at that point?
This is for student, this is when we say withdrawing, it's dropping out. And so we have an obligation to do some educating and informing them about other options. So this isn't just about withdrawing, and this is the students that don't have an obligation to attend.
Okay, right, so 16 to 18-year-olds, but someone says they seek to withdraw, and...
We can't deny them that they can.
Right, we can't deny them, and we say, you know, we want you to attend a meeting. And they say politely, no, thank you. Right, I don't know how we would enforce that, this sort of requirement on someone who said they want to leave.
I was just going to share, I was, you know, as the board representative to the Safe and Supportive Schools group, it was wonderful to be in these conversations with a great representative group of staff members, families, and I know students have also provided input that is reflected in this. And so it was just great to see the conversations that were taking place and the different perspectives that were raised and helping to get us to this point.
I mean, just to be clear, I think we should compel staff to have, to arrange such a meeting. But I don't know if we can compel someone who's walking out the door to hold up for an hour.
But you can give it a shot.
You can give it a shot, and we expect someone to try.
So we could really change the language on that. We'll try to implement, but not say that that will... Other input or feedback? And obviously, there is a large amount in terms of this and guidelines. And so obviously, as you know, since this is a complete overhaul, this will probably go through four reads prior to approval. And so we can take feedback now, but we also then can, over the next several weeks, we'll come back, provide the old policy as an extra copy, the MSBA also as an extra copy, and then we will do some revisions.
So one of the things I would like to share is that on October 23rd, this will go back to the Safe and Supportive Schools, because there are some pretty significant changes based on their feedback, wanting it to be, have a more positive tone to it, and have it be more of a collaboration between school staff and families and students. So if you have any feedback that you want us to take into consideration that I can bring back, it would be great. Administration has also taken a look at these policies.
Can I ask about, in the guidelines on 6A, if we could clarify the difference between co-curricular activities and school-sponsored activities, since one are exempt from this rule?
I'm just trying to get it, no, that's fine.
Right, so, do we define co-curricular and extracurricular? Could I say what those differences are? I could not.
And then, I guess, this is our, these are our guidelines, but I'm wondering how we would functionally implement being sure that a student was here for their seven class period days, or class periods for the day?
Attendance's statement. I mean, I remember high school students saying, being aware of the requirement and knowing that someone was, you know, they'd get marked for absences. Now, would word filter down to the after-school activity in time for that to be acted on? I don't know.
Mr. Boye has actually worked to implement that already. And so what he said is he couldn't promise that coaches could catch it that day, but that students were aware of this particular, because this is in play right now. This is part of Minnesota State High School League work. That if they didn't catch it that day, they would catch it afterwards and deal with that if a student had sort of snuck through. The students are aware of it, and so are the coaches. We do our best.
Within that same area, the guidelines, 6B, the Activities Director has authority to make exceptions to that rule if parent request is received. Just one, I assume that the Activities Director checks with the rest of the building to make sure that that request makes sense, right? Is the student in good standing? Is this something that, you know, are there activities that that student is involved in that are, you know, is this part of a larger problem, or is this a sincere request?
Yes, yes, that is a rare thing that has been granted on very few occasions where he... One, the example that I believe they came up with in conversation was a family-based funeral that was an hour drive away, that took four hours during the school day to get going and back to, and that they wanted to respect that. So it's significantly extended in certain ways.
And then 6C, what is adequate progress towards graduation? If we're saying that this student has to maintain adequate progress towards graduation, we should all be able to point to some chart that points that out.
We will clarify that.
The district recognized cultural observances. Is that something that we need to define? This isn't the guideline, as far as, these are the sort of valid excuses for absences. Is that something that we can define further, or?
We will look and gather information on that.
Yeah. I kind of like a vague.
It leaves an awful lot of room for interpretation, doesn't it?
But also risk then for it not being fair enough.
Correct, for it not be fair enough.
Correct, yeah, if it's not fairly applied, then. I appreciate that thought.
Right, there was also conversation about when the school is notified in advance, and if that's appropriate enough, and that's coming to the Safe and Supportive Schools. We can talk about that language also. Were there any point before revision?
If you have any.
You can also email us, and we will continue to work on those.
Great, thank you. So we will move on to donations.
All right, and so we have donations. So we received the following donations to the RHS Random Acts of Kindness account. $150 anonymous donation to purchase a Chromebook for a student. $355 from Hope Church School Supply Drive. $200 from Jennifer Cotsmith-Crowes. And $3,000 from the Kopp Family Foundation. So we appreciate those donations to the RHS Random Acts of Kindness. Spartan Foundation donated $500 to the RHS Theater Club to help pay for new microphones. So we are very thankful to the Spartan Foundation. Greater Twin Cities Honda and Richfield Bloomington Honda donated $10,000 to Richfield Middle School and the STEM programming at RMS. So we are very thankful and appreciative of Greater Twin Cities Honda and Richfield Bloomington Honda. And then finally, Jersey Mike's Sub of Richfield contributed $757 to Sheridan Hills from their opening fundraising support of Richfield Public Schools. And so we are very thankful and appreciative of Jersey Mike's Subs of Richfield.
I will move the, we accept these donations with gratitude.
We have a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Mr. Ashmead. So any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and we will accept these donations with gratitude. We will move on to advanced planning and the legislative update.
And so at AMSD, Mr. Tensing and I were able to hear two governor candidates, both Tim Walz and Jeff Johnson speak. They each presented on a number of questions on the AMSD platform, shared their perspectives on how they would govern if they were elected as governor of the state of Minnesota. And then the questions that were asked were actually preset questions from AMSD to make sure that they were connected to the AMSD platform. Mr. Tensing, can you add?
So as I had indicated, that I'd be reporting back to the board on what we heard, and specifically reporting back on how that aligns with what we have identified as our legislative priorities, which actually align fairly well with the AMSD priorities. Representative Walz spoke first. He is a former public, public school teacher, that's right, high school teacher. And that was clearly a big sort of formative piece for him in terms of informing his position on the importance of K-12. Mitch Walz laid out, I think, a very holistic view that sort of really sort of strongly values the role of K-12 as a foundation for overall prosperity and quality of life within the state. And his, he saw the role of the governor in terms of sort of building K-12 education as being kind of a champion for K-12, to sort of build the enthusiasm and support among the electorate for supporting K-12 education, and for making the case to voters that this is an investment of taxpayer funds that is well worth it to the electorate on the whole. He definitely was aligned with the majority of our positions in terms of specific issues. So he would support indexing the general education formula to inflation. He would support levy equalization. He would support reducing the special ed cross-subsidy, indicating that his feeling was that the federal responsibility was a huge part of that. And so it sounds like, you know, his experience in Congress is leading him to feel that there's some degree of advocacy that needs to happen at the federal level to fund that federal responsibility. He would support allowing school boards to renew existing referenda at the same dollar amount as they had been approved. He would not support taxpayer-funded vouchers for non-public school. In terms of his approach with teacher shortage and building a diverse teaching workforce, I think, again, this goes along with his overall sense that the role of the governor is to be sort of a champion and, I don't want to say cheerleader, but to some extent, building enthusiasm for K-12 education and for teaching as a profession. And so I think that that was really his approach with the teacher shortage and diversity issue is to try and really lift up teaching as a valued profession and provide incentives for young people to enter the field. He would support in terms of the MCA. Mr. Walz was also pretty clear that he sees assessments as a tool for informing instruction, and that his view of the MCA is less as a, less as a sort of punitive tool and more as a tool for identifying areas for improvement, areas in need of improvement, which I think aligns with a lot of the work that the current commissioner has done to sort of change the way we're sort of implementing our accountability system for schools that are sort of focus schools or schools that are in need of improvement. So that was Mr. Walz. Mr. Johnson did definitely out a different type of a view in terms of what his view was for, in terms of how he saw the state succeeding in K-12 education. Certainly, Mr. Johnson also expressed a very strong appreciation for the work of school boards and very strong value in public K-12 education. What is clearly very important value to Mr. Johnson is accountability within government and accountability to taxpayers. And so he did express a feeling that regulatory overreach is a problem within the state of Minnesota, would be Mr. Johnson's opinion. And reining in that regulatory overreach feels like that that's a big piece of what he wants to do, because he feels that it can't... because he feels that it can make government less responsive to the people. And so I think that sort of informs a big piece of what his kind of philosophy is, his sort of governing philosophy in general. Within that framework, I think the biggest thing that, it was clear that, you know, Mr. Johnson knew that he was, to some extent, a little bit on the defensive walking into this particular audience, yeah. And he was, he knew that he was not going to be able to give us an easy guess answer on a lot of the AMSD positions that had already been expressed. And I really want to give him credit for being very upfront and honest about that. And, you know, so he was very willing to say all of the places that he would not necessarily sort of give a blanket yes to the request, but also was clear that he would keep an open door and would be ready to sit down and discuss what's the best thing to move forward. So as far as some of the specific positions, sort of legislative positions that both AMSD and our school board have put forward, Mr. Johnson would be a no on indexing the formula allowance to inflation. And he would be a no on putting any type of what he sees as autopiloting with budgeting in terms of the strategy moving forward for setting the state's budget. And so that would apply to the special across subsidy as well. He would be a yes on levy equalization, but a no on board renewal. So he feel, I think he recognizes the need to equalize in terms of having equity across districts. He, but he is a no on board renewal, indicating that he really feels that it's important to maintain that degree of accountability to taxpayers, that direct accountability to taxpayers. He acknowledges that while he states that local control is really kind of one of the, sort of his core values, that not allowing local school boards that levy authority is sort of counter to his opinion on local control. But I think this is just sort of a prioritization for him in terms of that accountability to taxpayers is of higher priority. He is in favor of scholarship programs for funding pre-K, whereas Mr. Walz would work with a sort of holistic, take-all-comers approach, not necessarily universal pre-K. Mr. Walz did not support universal pre-K, but he did support continuing to fund pre-K through sort of a diverse array of providers. Mr. Johnson is definitely more into the scholarship approach, which would try to target the money to those who are in the greatest need. And so I think he's seeing that as a more effective way, a more efficient way. He is a yes on vouchers, indicating that would he support, would he support vouchers, if vouchers were to become a reality, he would require that schools that would receive voucher-related funds should comply with at least some of the mandates that apply to public schools as well. His approach with teacher workforce and diversity is, again, primarily that deregulation approach, so easing up on licensure requirements and easing up on restrictions for schools related to hiring. I think he believes that the restrictions on school districts as managers that are in place with our union contracts are excessive, and that his approach there would be to try and lift restrictions there to drive more opportunities. In terms of the MCA, Mr. Johnson is not tied to any of our current assessment plans, and he felt that working with educators would be the way to go forward. He didn't necessarily have a specific answer on the MCA, but I think he was open to that conversation. So that's what we heard from our gubernatorial candidates. I think it was very informative, and again, I think we got some pretty different views in terms of the role of government with supporting K-12 education.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So if there are no further questions about all of that information, we will move on to information and questions from the board.
I got nothing.
Okay, so future meeting dates, our next meeting will be November 5. Regular board meeting with Centennial School presenting, followed by November 19, 7:00 PM, regular board meeting, which will include public comment. Are there any suggested future agenda items?
One note, I will be absent from our next meeting on the 5th. I will be out of state for a business trip, so I'm especially sad to miss Centennial School's visit to our board meeting. And then for potential future agenda items, I was thinking about this with respect to our payment card conversation, is just, at the appropriate time this school year, one will get a sense and have some conversations about the next round of strategic planning. Because I think we will be approaching that five-year mark, and I know our current plan was initially set out as a five-year plan, if I remember correctly.
Yes, so we would plan to do strategic planning during the 1920 school year, having things launched out in 2021 fall.
So a conversation at some point about how we are going to approach that and what the timeline of that in the next school year would be, I think, would be very helpful.
Couple of reminders, we have Policy 955 and 979, which is community use of space and fundraising. We did meet and talked about them with the Extracurricular Advisor. Those will be back with some revisions in them. So they have been extended hiatus. They shall return with a new draft coming up in November. And then we'll also do that next look at our legislative platform in preparation for a study session to happen on one of our December meetings with our legislators that we are in process of setting up.
If anyone.
If anyone is.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Paulus, a second by Ms. Rocky. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and we are adjourned.